Okay, we will call the common council meeting to order at six o'clock PM on Tuesday, November 26th, 2024. What I want to invite up is Valen Eduardo, right? Come on up and they will lead us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. As always, we appreciate you guys being here.
Thank you.
Go ahead and we'll go, please.
Edelton.
Here.
Bargain.
Here.
Ramino.
Here.
DeGol.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Yes, you're all pretty good. Thank you. Appreciate it. In front of you are the meeting minutes from our last meeting on November 12th. Were there any changes or corrections?
I don't know.
Okay.
Under your report, Senator Bush, isn't it B-U-S-C-H?
It is. Good catch. B-U-S-C-H. That's correct. Any other comments? Hearing none. Can I have motion to approve with the noted change?
So moved.
Motion by Jennifer second by Tad. Further discussion. All those in favor should put the usual sign. It is unanimous. Drone demonstration. You ready?
Well.
You sure?
Having some technical difficulties.
Of course.
Lots of hardship.
We can delay. I mean, we can delay till later in the interview.
I'll let you know when it's up.
Okay. Next up is ordinance 2024-20. Do I have a motion to read by title only?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jenny. Second by Leslie. Further discussion. All those in favor should put the usual sign. It is unanimous. Please read ordinance 2024-20 by title only.
Ordinance 2024-20, an ordinance to be known as a 2025 salary range benefit ordinance.
Obviously, this hasn't changed since last time. Any questions, comments, concerns? Do I have motion to approve ordinance 2024-20 on second and final reading?
It's removed.
Second.
Motion by Tad, second by Leslie. Further discussion. All those in favor should put the usual sign. It is unanimous. Next up is ordinance 2024-21. Do I have a motion to read by title only?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jennifer, second by Jenny. Further discussion. All those in favor should put the usual sign. It is unanimous. Please read ordinance 2024-21 by title only.
Ordinance 2024-21, an ordinance fixing the annual salaries of all elected officials by the City of Columbia City, Indiana, effective December 28, 2024, for the year 2025.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Has not changed since last time. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 2024-21 on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Jennifer. Further discussion. All those in favor should put the usual sign. It is unanimous. Next up is ordinance 2024-24. Do I have a motion to read by title only?
So, second.
Motion by Tad, I think.
Yep.
Right? Second by Leslie. Okay, further discussion. All those in favor should put the usual sign. It is unanimous. Please read ordinance 2024-24 by title only.
Ordinance 2024-21, an ordinance amending Title V, Chapter 51, sewage service for 55... Oh, I'm sorry. Sewage service and 55 pretreatment and pollutants of the code of ordinances of the City of Columbia City, Indiana.
So... Any changes, corrections, issues on that? You guys didn't change anything from last time, did you not, anything? So, any questions, comments, concerns about that? Okay, do I have a motion to approve ordinance 2024-24 on second and final reading?
It's removed.
Second.
Motion by Tad, second by Jenny. Further discussion. All those in favor should put the usual sign. It is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, next up is Resolution 2024-25. Do I have a motion to read by title only?
So moved.
Motion by Jennifer, second by Dan. Further discussion. All those in favor should put the usual sign. It is unanimous. Please read Resolution Number 2024-25 by title only.
Resolution 2024-25, a resolution authorizing the participation to an agreement by and between the City of Columbia City, Indiana, and Whitley County, Indiana.
Okay, so this is the agreement for the city to accept the property transfer, if you will, from the county, and that would be, the property would be the Whitley County Jail, current Whitley County Jail. As I described to the Board of Works, by the way, Board of Works, they approved the property pending your approval. So as a part of that, the city, obviously, I was approached by the county with the idea, would we be willing to accept the jail property and the adjoining parking lot behind it for, you know, public benefit, if you will? So we had some really good conversations. We went to a tour of the property. The property looked to be in good condition. So we started having conversations about what this property transfer could look like. We also, the redevelopment commission and I kind of engaged an engineer to come in and actually look at the building from an engineering standpoint and make sure it was solid. We met today, Tad, just so for your information, and he said it's a solid building. Strong building. It's good. Really no major concerns at all in the building. They've kept it up. They've taken care of it. They have provided all of the maintenance schedule, all of the repairs and replacements in it. They've given us the building envelope information, the blueprints. They've given us everything. So I do want to, you know, say thanks to the county for providing all that information. It's made this process very, very easy. Couple things you'll note in the actual transfer agreement, and that is that obviously the property has been transferred to us as is. So obviously, they're not planning to put any more money into it between now and when they actually give it to us, right? Which makes sense. They're giving it to us with, for no cost. However, there is a first right of refusal for the first seven years. So if the city decides, hey, in this first seven years, we want to dispose of the property, then the county gets the first right of refusal on that one. After the seven years, then we can basically do whatever we want with that. But we do have 120 days for due diligence purposes. So if for some reason we do find something that maybe isn't right or whatever, we can always back out of the agreement. So that is in there. The... One other thing, there's a blank space on six, on item six on there, which is the possession date. I got that date today, and they're saying on or before March 1st of 2025. So that is that date, just so you're aware. Besides that, I'll tell you, like I said today, we had the meeting with the engineer. They're working up a couple of conceptual designs of what could be there. Again, just very, very, very preliminary. Just making sure that we can actually do some of the things we've talked about, like police station and some of the other components of that and other things in there. But so kind of long story short is, is kind of we're in that due diligence period, even though it says 120 days. We're kind of in that period right now. And there is nothing coming up that gives me red flags. There's nothing that the engineer has kind of thrown up red flags wise. So for that. I think that's probably it. So if you were to accept the resolution, I would ask that you accept the resolution with, obviously, Dan, be the signatory for the council on the actual agreement. But I'm happy to answer any questions you have regarding the jail or anything like that.
So if we were to take it.
Yeah.
Is it move-in ready for Gary and his team? Like right now, I mean, obviously, the sheriff's department moved on there.
Yeah.
So it should have most of the infrastructure there that we need.
Yeah, so I think, I think the short answer to your question is yes. Obviously, we would still need to do the security cameras and all those little technological things. I don't say that, by the way, towards you, Terry. It's not little. I know it's a big thing, okay? But it's not moving walls. So I guess I say all that to say, is it move-in ready? Pretty much. Gary, I don't know if you have anything more you want to say on the, like, the jail's pretty much move-in ready, right? I mean...
Yeah, I mean, we could definitely move in. We could move in pretty quickly. And then just, once they started the construction and stuff, tearing down some of the walls and doing something, we could move around that, work around that.
Yeah.
So even if we just, let's just say, bare bones.
Yeah.
We took it over.
Yep.
And at the bare minimum, we just moved the police department there.
Yes.
Let's just say we have no budget to do anything else.
Yes.
Except make it user-ready, install some cameras, change locks, whatever. Is that...
We've got to move our fiber network that way.
Okay.
So you're going to have to put a fiber network there. You're going to have to have, you know, servers and stuff like that, switches and everything for their equipment to run on. And that's if all the wiring is good.
Would that be a replication of what we already have here? Would you then treat this as a backup?
It would be another location, no different than the water department or anything else. They're all going to have to have the same equipment and same services. So it's just an extension off of our network.
Okay.
So, I mean, I guess, short answer is, outside the technological component, we can move in pretty quickly. I mean, it's not something... So I think, I'm going to try to read your train of thought.
Yeah.
My guess is if you're saying, you know, we can basically move in if we do nothing for multiple years.
Yes.
It's not going to cost us anything more if you... I mean, it will cost us because it's another building, but it's not going to be something where we're mandated to go in and dump millions of dollars into the building.
You're going to have your fixed expenses for all your utilities and all that.
But ultimately, the answer is yes. We can move in there with not a ton of trouble. And then that opens up, obviously, you know, space here for whatever purpose. But, you know, you think about it, and one thing I tasked Gary with doing is really figuring out, what is the square footage that we currently have here? And not just here, but what do we have for the Milo range? What do we have for, you know, some of the other locations, if you will, that the police department is kind of inhabiting at the moment? Because as we kind of think about and plan for that building in the future, I don't want it to just be, what do we need for the next five years, but what do we need for the next 30 years? So that we're being thoughtful about how we do that. And in talking to the engineer today, I think it's definitely something that we can, we can move them in and kind of work construction around them. So that we don't, at least the sense I got back was we didn't have to move them in, and then when we're ready to construction, move them back in here and then move them back. So I think we can work around them, is the point. So they may have to do a little bit of maneuvering there during construction, but I think we can play a little round robin there. It'll be okay.
Space, the space in there is amazing.
It's huge.
Like I say, I think there's a lot of room for us to dream of what might be possible in that facility. I've been in there and not jail.
It's free from inside the cell.
But you go under the jail ministry. But no, it's a facility that could be a really beneficial for everybody. We just have to dream and figure out what can happen. I'm really happy about the police department being able to spread their wings a little bit and start getting a volume of light wheels here.
Nice to bring up some space.
Yeah, I think the police department has a huge benefit with training. I mean, there's just, it's kind of a really neat thing for them to come to us and, you know, dream big and see what we can do to continue having a top-notch police force. So I'm pretty excited for that.
And again, I think just in general, I think there's value in the city having control of a property on our square.
Absolutely.
I think there's just value there. And so if nothing else, if we get the property and we sit on it for seven years or 10 years or whatever, or three years, and we say, you know what, this isn't working out, we can do something different with it. So I mean, that's, the nice thing is, is I think the agreement gives us some flexibility when it comes to that. And again, just like anything else, we've got to make sure we have a funding source, you know, for all these things. Whether it's a self-funded or whether it's a, you know, bond-funded or whatever the case is. So lots of steps to go ahead in time. But because the time clock is moving quickly as, you know, the county tries to figure out, you know, when they're going to be moving all the jail inmates, individuals, all those kind of operations out to the new facility. I mean, that clock is running. And so I want to make sure that we have that opportunity to grab it before something else. So, other questions?
So, yeah. Sorry, I'm...
Good.
I just moved the building inside.
Logistically, you're thinking through all the...
So if we take over ownership or of it on March 1st, and we do nothing with it, we can literally do nothing if we choose to, correct?
Sure. Yeah.
So if that...
I mean, the goal, yeah, so the goal obviously would be is that, you know, on or before March 1st, you know, when we take possession of it, that we have a plan ready at that time to say, okay, how do we start transitioning into that building? And I'm not imagining we'll move in in a month, right? But it's not something where we have to do a complete remodel before we move in. So I think that's, there's a lot of value there, but yes. There's still going to be some logistics, obviously.
Sure.
Other questions, comments, thoughts? Okay. So can I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-25 and approval of the property transfer?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Further discussion. All those in favor should put the usual sign. It is unanimous. Thank you. I think that, I think that is going to become a very big deal for our community in the future. Are you ready?
Well, it's not me, though, but...
Okay, hold on.
Well, I can't stay on the wifi.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
There it is.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Is this right downtown?
Okay, so is the...
Oh, there's... There we go.
The council wifi?
There, you can have some magic on this.
Come on. He's holding it off his phone. Just uploaded like a YouTube video with some police chase or something. Just put it on.
And I'd be like, oh, this...
Put like any kind of drone for the...
We should have a replant of this. Had to call the courtway.
Horizon R500. It'll be on the back of that. I need that too.
They both have to be on the same one.
Yes, yeah, that's what I'm trying to get, both on the same one.
Why can't he just go on?
First time here.
We had him on the other day, and he had him on just now.
Hopefully, your video works.
I think it is council. It's open council. I know it's not the one, it's not the wifi, but here it is next. There you go. Okay. Okay, there you go.
All right, we're in.
Does it dim the lights?
Gary, do you want one of the windows opened up so they can come through?
Right in here.
Come get you, Chip. Well, that's some kind of production there.
Go to one screen.
I think he's going to change the battery.
Is there a sound?
Code drones are currently broadcasting.
Well, no, that's not good. It'll come back.
You said he's changing the battery in the drone?
Yeah.
So just as a, as kind of background and stuff, I did ask Gary, I've been asking for a while, to have a drone demonstration for you all, so that you know the value of our drone program. JJ's done a really, really great job of kind of helping it and managing it.
For sure, yeah.
And so it's something where, you know, we've used it, I don't know how many times we've used it, but we found...
Found missing people, missing girl.
Yeah. Some kids, yeah.
Some suspects that were running.
So it's a...
Okay, we're back up.
Can we just have one drone, Gary, or do we have multiple?
We have one drone this size, and then we got some smaller ones. Did you get those guys?
Negative, they're busy. They said they were busy.
Well, I messaged them to tell them to come out.
I did. No response.
So there's the fact, obviously, Eagle Park. And then the baseball diamond's back there.
I can fly over my house and see if my light's on.
I was going to say, call them and tell them to come out.
What's the range, Gary?
Yeah.
It goes a long way. What's the range, JJ?
As long as I have good connection, I can go about a mile plus.
Wow. Like away from the drone? Like you can take the drone away from you?
Yeah, I'll go all the way back. I can go basically to Morris's park from here.
Can we see that?
Which I'll have to now.
So when...
If they can see, and it shows my speed right now, 31.3, the direction I'm heading. And if you look at the feet next to the blue and green, off to your guys' left. And I'm currently 874 feet away from where the drones are, off from the drones away from me, technically.
We got all that. You have more control stuff there than what it shows me.
Yeah, I'm ready if you are.
So when...
Down, ready.
All right. So what we're going to do, we're going to have him, like, find a guy and then have like a take-down team.
Just do whatever.
If they were just scared.
No, he don't know what they're going to do.
Who's going to take him down?
Oh, oh, there they are.
Where? Oh.
Somebody came in out there.
See, there's the bad guy. You can see him. Ah, yeah. And then you got the good guy back here.
Well, the good guy's supposed to be winding up shots by... Shots fired.
No, he's got his arms up.
Oh, okay.
He's giving up.
Now he's backing him up to see where he's even standing. He heated up the ground right there, so fix up that heat. We did find a guy one time that was leaning up against the shed, and he heated up the side of the shed. Or down. Oh, there. Oh, it's inside. It's one of them little bell sheds. See, then they just take him down there. See, this is where you can see the roof, Matt.
Yeah.
So you can see where they replaced the roof there?
Yeah, they did an excellent job.
So, yeah, so I don't know if you'll, we'll be here for a few minutes, JJ, if you want to bring up your little one.
Yeah, I'll, let me bring this all down, and I'll be there.
Okay, bye.
Awesome.
Bye.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's really a good tool. It's been very valuable to the department, for sure. Like I said, it's found some suspects. It's found some missing people. One was even a missing girl. Like a juvenile.
Hey, Gary, so does he just have that on his person or in his vehicle?
Yeah.
At all times, so it's not like he's got a bike, wake up.
So we call him and say, hey, we need, we need some help finding somebody or whatever. Somebody run from a car, get in a quick pursuit.
How often, how often do you use it?
Well, when we first got it, we used it often. Now, it just depends on... Or when somebody just, you know, was missing.
Is he the only one that's trained to use it?
No, well, Chris is trained as well, but his, right now, he's probably just saying, don't matter, I can get it updated. But, yeah, he's also trained.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think, don't they have to have a true pilot's license or to do that?
I think it's pilot's license 101 or something like that. It's a...
That's real cool.
I think with, you know, I think about back when we had a true manhunt happening when Tony was chief, that we didn't have that capability, and the individual, I think we ended up finding out was in the woods somewhere, and we couldn't find, he wasn't a dog, we couldn't find him. And that, that drone would have been tremendously valuable to us. So it's nice when you can go over a wooded area and see, see a hotspot in the middle of it, right? And see the outline of a human, and it's a, it's a pretty cool tool, so. Thank you, Gary. So JJ's coming back for another...
Like a smaller one inside.
Very good. Thank you. Next up is, so we'll come back to that. Next up is job description for the deputy fire chief. Tom, I know you and Beth have worked on this. I think, I'm trying to remember, is the one in the Dropbox, the new updated one versus the one?
Yes.
Okay, so don't look at the one in your packet, look at the one in the Dropbox. That's the newer updated version, if you will. Ultimately, you know, generally speaking, the fire, the deputy fire chief does what the fire chief does generally. You know, obviously, steps in for, for him when he's out. You know, really, it's an opportunity where we have some redundancy in responsibilities and things like that, as you're well aware. You know, we've had a police chief for a long time. We have a supervisor in most of the departments. We just don't have a true second in command, if you will, a full-time second in command in the fire department. So, Tom, do you want to say anything about that, or...
No, the only thing I noticed since that was put in the Dropbox was, there's one little thing that needs fixed, and it says three of four, and then it goes, there's actually four pages, and then there's a spot where it says four of three.
So that needs to be fixed. So if you would accept that this evening, I would ask that you allow us to make that a change. Just in the page numbering.
Yes.
Gotcha. Questions from the council on the position description for the deputy fire chief? I think the plan is to hire for the beginning of the year or at the beginning of the year, right?
Yes, it's, it's the mayor's appointment. But yes, that was the plan from y'all discussed.
Okay, with that, do I have a motion to approve the position description for the deputy fire chief?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jennifer, second by Tad. Further discussion. All those in favor should put the usual sign. It is unanimous. Thank you. Department head reports. Kelly?
Yeah, just an update on Timbersheds subdivision. They re-purled the roads the other day with Wayne Asphalt and Fleming. And they got stone put down, and they've put curbs in now. And the next step will be doing sewer testing for air pressure and mandrel testing on the sewer main. And then Wayne Asphalt will be getting binder and surface in when the weather gets a little warmer. And then, once all that's done, they'll be bringing that acceptance of infrastructure for the warranty period to Board of Works for approval. And we're just doing leaves and grading alleys and maintenance, stuff like that. That's...
Questions of Kelly. Thank you. Chip?
So an update, Blue River Trail is looking to be starting hopefully end of February, first of March. I'll keep you updated on that. Eagle Park, we're having the light poles we're being poured today, so hopefully we get some movement on that. And supposedly, next week, Hunger is supposed to be in to start the skate park. Other than that, I'm busy behind the scenes doing stuff, so nothing else.
Questions to Chip? Thank you, Chip.
We're just going through and winterizing buildings, pulling out water lines. And then we're starting to build the props for Father Daughter Dance. And I'm still waiting to the inspector to get back with me, so we can have the bull tunnel inspected and make sure that it's still, still safe, so we can move forward with the project on that, so. And then, last night, I had park board, and the discussion was the pool and the general emission price and some of the other pricing. And they approved to raise the price of general emission to $7. And then we adjusted some other pricing. That pricing hasn't been changed since the pool opened in 2018. So everything has gone up in price since then, as everybody... So everything has gone up in price since then, as everybody well knows, so.
And that same five dollar admission fee daily goes back even more decades into Burma Pool time range, so. It's, it's a long time coming. It's never easy, but we, we did lose money this year and so we're trying to at least buoy that a little bit if possible, so. Questions to Matt? Thank you. Gary?
All right. Ewing and Smith were both approved by the police and fire pension board through the state. So their start date is Monday, December second. Well, their, their hire date is Saturday, the twenty-ninth, I believe?
Thirtieth, the thirtieth.
Thirtieth. So Saturday, the thirtieth is their hire date. Their start date's Monday, the second. So they're excited and ready to start their forty-hour crew basic that we're doing on Monday. I think they're probably, I think they're more excited than I am, but probably not more excited. They have a full crew. Officer Fuller has started and he's in his FTO process. And he'll, before he goes out to the school, we're going to put him through the system or through our FTO process to make sure he's, goes with how we do things here and, you know, it's a little bit different than Warsaw, but I don't see any issues there and he's moving right along. Got our new vehicles, put them in the cop's gear to be fully equipped. Shouldn't, I mean, he said he's a little behind, but not too far, so we should still have him by the end of the year. Stuffed the cruiser, Toys for Tots is December sixth and seventh, from six to eight. Patrol and for presents is December fifteenth, from one to three. Expected to have eighty to a hundred children. Officer Thomas has done a great job with that program and continues to do good things with it. The lighted Christmas parade is this Friday, as I'm sure Jennifer will touch on. And Turkey Trot is also for the YMCA's Thanksgiving morning between eight and nine-thirty roughly. Dispatch has replaced a tabletop which was bubbling up on Thursday and now everything was covered under warranty, so. In custody.
Questions to Terry? Thank you. Terry?
Uh, the test kitchen is entering its final phases and should be operational soon. The server migration is also going well. All the new servers are built and we're just in the process of trying to get with each vendor and transferring their software from one to the other so that we can switch them over. Specter was down to date and sold some of that software in the new server. They got here about ten o'clock this morning, left about four o'clock and took quite a bit longer than they thought it would. SOS should be hidden tomorrow to start moving some of our fiber network from the old phone room into the server room. And this morning around eight, we shut down all the servers to upgrade the BIOS and brought those all back up. Took about forty-five minutes and everything went well with that.
Questions to Terry? Thank you. Mike?
Letters went out from one twenty about the lead copper. It went to the, one letter went out saying that we know you have lead lines. The other letter went out and said, we think you have lead lines. We can have not determined it. While the seventeen hundred letters that went out, we have already whittled it down two hundred and twenty-two just in the last, what, three days that they are not lead, so we won't have to mess with it. Hopefully, hopefully it'll go down a lot more.
The closer to a thousand or less, the better. The less that, the less that price tag is every time someone calls and we confirm, nope, not lead, that's better for our rate payers.
So you already know which ones don't have it?
Huh?
So you already know which houses don't have it for sure?
There's a lot of them, yeah. Like out at Deer Chase, out at Lincoln Point. The newer additions, we know that's not lead. Mainly the lead is that like on Elm Street, Oak Street.
Is there a certain timeframe that it was really used more than others? I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, probably back in the forties and fifties.
Cause I think it was like, what, after nineteen seventies, it wasn't ever used, basically?
Well, once they, they started using copper, it was so much lighter that, you know, why, why put that heavy lead in and that? So we know where there's certain areas where we're sure that it's lead, you know, like my old house has led that. But where, you know, we didn't get in to see where it's been changed. Well, now that the people's got the letters, they're finally like thinking, hey, we better, you know, call and see what they think. Well, they're letting us in to see what's inside the house. We're getting calls every day.
That's great.
So there might even be places that are in parts of the city that are older that you might not have to replace anyway?
Right. Right. Downtown. There's only one or two places that's not lead downtown.
It's not lead. Not lead. Questions to Mike? Thank you.
So this drone, I mean, this is a tool that you could use, like you have a barricaded subject or something and it just kind of busts through the window and fly in there? You go in and fix the room? I told you to fly into that thing, but it's not.
You're not gonna surprise anybody with that.
They may whack it down. Hopefully you get a good vision of.
Yeah, where people, where everything is and. Yeah, it's funny, sometimes I'll be sitting in my office and they'll be doing it in the, in the stairwell and I can always hear it when it's gonna.
It runs like a virtual thing, like a little virtual.
That's basically a video game.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Is he gonna come in or is that, was that the, was that the extent of it?
He might come in if you have any questions.
You guys have any questions for him? Well, we appreciate him doing that, so. Oh, there he is.
I told her to fly it up higher.
That's cool.
See how good he is if he can pick that up?
So is, is there, so there's no audio on that either, is there? So he couldn't hear the signal? Cool.
But, yeah.
Very nice.
It's really good. That's a good, let's, we'll walk that after that big one.
Yeah. Thanks for that demonstration. Tom, are we due?
Yes.
Okay.
We got some bad news from Forge Fire, who's the manufacturer of our training facility. We've got a delay in the repair of that from the garbage truck hitting it. Gosh, what was that? Back in July, August, somewhere around there. It's gonna be March timeframe before they get here to get that repaired, so we're trying to get it pushed forward, but gosh, we're trying, we're also trying to figure out why the delay, so we'll keep you posted. We have ten apps for our hiring process that we're going through. The written test will be December fourteenth. Mayor, on years of good interviews, I meant written test. Mind your report.
Thanks.
The building facade is complete on the firehouse. I appreciate the council. Earlier in the year, we took what was going to be fixing up the building facade. We got the windows done, we got the roof done, and I found a company that upgraded our facade for much cheaper than what we originally put in there for, so it actually worked out all three ways. And I appreciate everybody going with me on, on that to make sure we got everything addressed, so thanks again for that. Our annual Christmas candy giveaway, which has been going on since the eighteen eighties, is gonna be December twenty-fourth again this year, from six to eight or until it's gone. We did this year lower our candy amount that we give away because in years past, we typically had just a little leftover, so we're cutting back a little bit, so we're gonna stay till it's gone this year. We're trying to get a grip on exactly how much, how much we need because we hate wasting any, any, any money or that we take in. The money that we take in goes back out to the end, so we don't wanna waste things, but we also wanna make sure we do the greatest good. Every year we do give away about five hundred pounds of candy and five hundred oranges, so it is a very, very good program that we've done for all those years. And our performance evaluations are about half done and hopefully by the end of next week, I'll be done with them, so.
Questions to Tom? Thank you. Mike?
Today we completed the twenty twenty-four skater upgrades on our little stations. Skater system on those. We have four more stations to do next year and then that project will be complete. I split it up over five years and when we're done, we'll probably be between five and six hundred thousand dollars when we're done. But we'll have all updated equipment and updated radios and everything like that, so. And they're all being tailored off of one panel that was put in by the RV center. All the panels that we've went so far are being built almost identical to that one, so as far as controls and everything like that, when the guys go to it, it's all the same equipment. They don't have to like when they're doing their job, you know, I have fifteen, twenty stations, well, each one will be different, so I'd have to remember on each one of them. So if you make them all the same, it makes the job a lot easier. So they're happy with the equipment that we're putting in. It's not cheap, but it's very good equipment. We've had very little issues from the switch over from the old to the new. Even, most of our always had is the skater system because it's a different radio system. And we have, we're running that system plus we're still running the existing system at the same time, so between our engineer and J K, they are working really well to make sure that those two work together until we can completely come off our old system. Command letter has been sent to IDIM after our C S O audit. I've not heard back on that, whether it was accepted yet or not. Still waiting to quote on our dice store. I was supposed to have something today. I did not get it, so. And then I had talked about our mixers. They broke, well, the mixer didn't break, but the support that they write on, both of them have broken, which they went into service the same time the dice store went in, so it's right around twenty years. We do have one mixer back in service. We brought it up and got it to the center point because there's three points of where it makes contact on the tank wall. So we've got it at the center one to where it's stronger and then we only run it one for the, for the eight hour shift because I'm not, I'm too, I'm chicken to run it overnight, so. Cause if it comes loose, it's gonna destroy itself. It's either gonna hit the bottom, go into the hole, but so that way we can keep track of it. And I do have, I haven't given, we were in contact with Xiong and they do have a rental mixer that we could sit in on the other side. It's a little smaller, but we might be able to set that in there and run that. So we have one that would run all the time and then we could run one back and forth. Essentially what it's gonna be is we're gonna have to empty that tank. It's gonna have to be drained and emptied because they're gonna have to go and get all the way to the lawn and put the brand new stuff in. It's a horrible time of year to be home because we're gonna start freezing up and they bring the trucks in and they get halfway to where they're going and they'll be frozen by the time they get there, so. Trying to decide if I wanna try to haul something now before it gets really frigid. Do the rental. I'm not sure on what to do. It's, the rentals would be about fifteen hundred dollars a month on that. So I'm not sure whether to do that or just take a chance with our big one. So I'm still, I'm thinking about that, but I'll let everyone know on what we decide to do there, so.
Questions to Michael?
Thank you, sir.
JJ?
Yes, sir.
How are you, buddy?
Good, how are you?
Good. Thanks for your demonstration.
Yeah, you're welcome. Sorry there was technical difficulties. I don't know if it was my squad car, Wi-Fi or what was going on. Once I connected to my work phone hotspot, it was like, oh, it worked, so.
Oh, okay, good. Does anybody have any questions to JJ regarding the drone? How often do you say you did, you actually deployed the drone?
This year, not as often as I would like. Um, this year's probably been a handful of times, five or six. Indoor drone we just got this year, not that much, but as you can see, it's loud. But it has lights, four different lights that I can mount on it, so if there's like a dark room, I can just mount the floor and rap, sending a thousand dollar drone into a building or a barricaded subject, someone in a home. What's the cost of that versus the cost of a life, you know, and you can't, you can't put a price on that. And then with the thermal drone, I'm hoping to either help utilities or fire, you know, when the building next to Dollar General or whatever, it would've been perfect. Be like, hey, we have a hotspot on the, you know, A B corner, north side or something, you know, like that, or crash the lines now, we can zoom in because we have a thirty-two time zooming on, zoom on it. Be like, hey, are those power lines, telephone lines? Versus someone trying to go up and see it get, you know, electrocuted and stuff like that, so.
So, and we saw obviously a, a human body on there, right? And the heat from there, what would the heat of the fire, what, I'm assuming that would just be much whiter or much, you know, brighter than.
So we have different thermal pallets, they're called.
Okay.
Everyone thinks thermal's like the rainbow thermal, but in search and rescue, it's hard to tell if that's a person versus an animal or not with the rainbow, so if you use anything that's warm, put it as white hot, you can see the different, I guess, figures of, oh, hey, that's an arm, that's a leg versus, oh, hey, that's a deer. That's a bird in the tree, that's a squirrel or black hot.
Yep.
So it just depends on, you know, different time of year too. Is it summer where it's ninety degrees out or is it like tonight where it's, what, thirty out or, you know, thirty-five out? So it just depends.
Show them them goggles.
Oh, yeah, so when I was flying, I haven't figured out, I have a drone case. I haven't been able to like screen cast it on the case, but this is how I fly. I wear these and this is literally the camera for the drone. So if I fly this for a barricaded subject, someone's gonna have to be by my side because, God, we're a barricaded subject, like jumped out a window and comes out, tries to harm us. But, yeah, I, I literally, when I, when I'm wearing these, this is, this is the camera, like what I see through here is the camera on the drone.
And that's for both drones or just the small?
Just, just the small one.
Just the small one.
Yeah, the bigger drone I should have brought in my case. I apologize. It's, it's a smart controller, so it's like a mini TV on there. Then I have a TV that I can H E M I port into it, so if I am on, let's say, a big scene, school shooting, explosion, whatever, I can stand to the side and instant command can stand there and look at the bears and be like, hey, can you zoom in over there or what's that over there? Versus just looking over my shoulder on a tiny little screen.
Talk about your license real quick.
So my part, it's a part one oh seven drone license on that aircraft license. It, it was the hardest sixty question test I've ever taken in my life. You have two hours to take it and you have to know airspace. Sorry, this thing's gonna, it's gonna wanna go off. You have no airspace, airport signs, different, uh, it's hard, it's hard to describe like maps that are on at the, at the airports and different like frequencies they're on. If I needed to have a radio to contact air control, I could, knock on wood, we're not really by any major airports like Fort Wayne. But it's just very, lot of knowledge on that and I actually just re-upped because it's valid for two years. So I had it and got it in twenty twenty-two, so it expired in November, but I just re-upped it and took another test online.
This is the exact same test you have to take every two years then or?
So it's a shorter one. It was a twenty-five question one, but you go through and like have like a review of everything and then they just pick twenty-five random questions that you hope to get right. But it, it was difficult, so I actually had to go to Fort Wayne to take it. Most of the time it's at like an airport. They have a specialized section that you have to go and take it, so.
Does, does the county have a drone program as well?
Yes, so county has, if you count Turbisco and that, they have three. You have Deputy Wayne Smith on second and then Deputy Dustin Howard on thirds, but Dustin Howard's leaving. And then you have Brandon Rittenhouse in Busco as a reserve who can fly. They have the M thirty-T, which is a big drone and has a lot more capabilities than our thermal one does, so.
So the nice thing is though is we kinda have that redundancy where if they have issues with their drone, they can call us and vice versa.
I actually got called this morning at six fifteen when I was feeding my one month old son. They're like, hey, can you come in and fly? I said, yep. Almost got to the squad car and then say, they said, hey, we don't need you anymore. I said, okay. So usually I need first ship calls. I'll get, since I'm on first ship and Wayne is on second, so we'll get the second ship call. And then third ship Dustin will, then if we need backup, we'll call up Brandon Rittenhouse.
That's great. That's great. the NLC Service Line Program. And I don't remember where we landed, I think it was something we kind of wanted to think through that a little bit. He has reached out to ask kind of if it's, if it's something we want to try to move forward on or something that we, we want to pass on, so I wanted to just kind of get your feedback of if you want me to continue pursuing that or if it's something where we're not interested. That's where they, where basically they could, they, they're basically a preferred provider, if you will, for service line warranties across the city and across our utility system, if you will. And then the, you know, if, for every person that buys in, there's a, there's a percentage that can come back to the city or you can just pass it on to the customer, some of those options, things like that. But just wanted to kind of get your thoughts of whether you want me to pursue this or to tell them thank you, no thanks, or what you want me to do. Yes, Ted?
Ironically, I was going to ask about that when Mike was showing us talking about because I, I think it's a, it's not a bad idea to at least offer it as an opportunity for people who may need the type of service replacing the lines that is going to be top of mind.
Kind of the insurance thing that they can buy into if they choose to and if they don't, they don't.
Yeah, it's, they have to opt in or opt out, so it's up to them.
Our, the only thing that we're kind of involved in is, is A, whether or not we want to, you know, I think that it's a, it's a portion of every policy they sell, we can put aside and use it for hardship, for, you know, our customers or whatever, or we can give that thing back, the money back effectively to policy holders, so that's an option, that's something you guys got to figure out. But second is basically, we're just putting our stamp of approval of that this, this is a reputable company, et cetera, and so, I mean, we really don't have much in it except to say, yes, you can do this business in our community or, no, we'd rather you not, so.
Are we comfortable with the due diligence that we're aware of with this organization?
I mean, lots of, yeah, I mean, I'll say some of the due diligence I've done, I've obviously I've looked at other communities that, that, and it's been a while, so testing on this, but I've looked at other communities that offer this. Obviously, there's communities in Indiana, but across the nation, national, you know, it's, it's National League of Cities, it's, you know, they endorse it, if you will, so it's a reputable company. Frankly, I know Home Serve has sent letters anyways in this area as a, that's still an option for people if, even if it's not, they're not the endorsed program, if you will, but I know Home Serve does this everywhere, it's their main thing, so.
Mayor, I know they, after our meeting when I was here, he did send a bunch of people work.
Yes.
But I don't think they got it out to the council.
Okay, that's fine. Well, I just, again, I just want to be able to respond to him and say, yes, we're interested, we're willing to move forward with the next steps, if you will, or A, no, we're not interested, thanks for your service.
I think it's just an option, you know, it's not.
It's not a mandatory, mandatory word for anybody, so.
Somebody chooses, you know, they got, no difference. Some of the things they have off for cars now.
Yeah. Or heck, I went and I bought something from Walmart and they offered me a two year warranty on some kind of electronic device or something, so.
I guess personally, I don't, with it, if they're, you know, they're a reputable company, so I agree with them. So just move to the next thing, will it?
Please agree with that generally? Okay.
I assume they wouldn't start it until like after the first of the year.
Oh, yeah, yeah. The, the thing I keep wondering personally is for the lead lines, I think there's mixed, there's, there's mixed opinions on whether or not the EPA slash IEDM is going to make us replace the customers' portion of that or if it's a, or if it's a, we replace it, they pay for it, or how that whole thing works. I think a lot of that's still to be fleshed out, if you will, but it makes me wonder if people were to take that, if that's, I'm not endorsing that, just so if anybody's watching this, I'm not saying that's going to happen. I'm just, I just wonder if that's something where it's kind of in the back of my mind of, so. Okay, well, I will kind of tell him that we'll move forward and then I'll see if he can get some updated documents and if we can get them sent out. Obviously, you know Thursday and Friday, City Hall is closed because of the Thanksgiving holidays. I too will not steal Jennifer's Thunder. Shop Small Saturday is coming out here on Saturday as well. Next week, you know, we're, we're getting into, as Tom mentioned, we're getting into evaluation time period, while I don't have a lot of those next week, the following week is about as well I do. So we have a lot of things scheduled for next week and one thing I want to make sure I mention to you is, is you should have gotten an invitation from Monday the 2nd at 2:30 for the, with the Kennedy Jail tour. Appreciate Commissioner Banks opening that up to us to take a look at it and just to kind of see what they have. I know I was out of town when they did their big hoopla for it, so. Besides that, Happy Thanksgiving, I guess that's, that's all I got, so. Dan?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yep.
No surprise, I have to just talk about.
That's okay, that's okay, that's okay.
Okay, first of all, you might have noticed that Santa's House is down on the courthouse lawn.
Did you?
And you might have noticed how great it looks.
It does look great.
Special thanks to the Union Busybells Extension Homewakers Group who came in last weekend and just went crazy on it.
Oh, okay, cool.
Lots of new stuff, there's lights on the front, so it looks really, really great this year. Want to thank Rosie for helping get the power turned on on Sunday so they could make sure the lights that they put on it worked. Thanks to the street department for managing to get it down there without any problems that I'm aware of. Thank you to the electric department for getting it hooked up. Thanks in advance to the police department, we'll be turning it on and off all the time. And probably everybody else in the city in some way is doing something that I said, so I don't want to miss anybody, but. The hours from Santa's House this year are posted on the Santa House page. Pretty soon, they'll also be posted somewhere on the house, I just have to get that done. Forty-seven other things, Friday, which is, what is Friday?
Lighted Christmas Parade.
Lighted Christmas Parade. 12th Annual Lighted Christmas Parade, very exciting. The parade starts at 6 o'clock, lineup is about 5:30. If, if you still want to participate, you still can, you just need to get a registration form turned in, in time.
How do they get those?
They contact.
Contact, okay. That's what I'm telling people, contact Jennifer.
And we have a lot of people signed up for it. I think it's shaping up to be pretty good. We've even had people from out of town who read about us online and want to come up here with their book, so.
Cool.
Okay?
That's cool.
Yeah, so it'll be fun, it will also be very cool, so be smart. Wear an extra coat.
Yes.
Be warm, you won't be outside very long because it is probably Whitley County's shortest parade, which we don't mind at all. Thanks in advance to everybody who will be helping to make the parade happen, it'll be exciting. There's plenty of places to watch it, there's no need to have everybody right at Van Buren and Chauncey, feel free to spread out, there's good spots everywhere to see it.
We are doing no parking on that 200 block of West Van Buren this year, so.
Correct, for, for measure of safety, this is our second year of doing that and I think based on last year, that was a good decision.
Yep.
Also, I would urge any parents watching this to please avoid letting your kids run.
Straight into the floats?
Yeah, it's, it's dark, it's busy, there's a lot going on, a lot of excitement, we just don't want anybody to get hurt. That'd be a very big bummer. Then I wanted to mention that the Arts Commission has partnered with the Whitley County Historical Museum and will be having an arts marketplace the next Friday, Friday, December 6th, from 3:00 to 8:00 at the museum. And different local artists will be setting up booths back in the main exhibit for that, so. And also managing kids' art activities, so, and then they made free activity as well. Oh, I would also want to mention, be sure residents of Columbia City to have your yards ready for judging for the Columbia City Municipal Lighting and Contest.
Yes.
If you could have that decorated by December 1st, that would be great. I'm excited that a lot of people have it up and ready already. I think they took advantage of the warm weather to get some stuff set up. Looks really good around town already. Council members, if you see something outstanding in your district, let me know, makes it a little bit quicker because we have to travel all around the whole city and it takes longer and longer every year, so, heads on.
Thank you. I forgot two things real quick, sorry Ted. First thing is, is at the next council meeting, the PEL study team will be here, the Level 3. If you've not looked at the Level 3 assessment, I highly recommend you doing that. I think generally speaking, the good news is, is that they, the PEL team took a lot of what the Whitley County Planning Group had, had kind of proposed for Columbia City at least, there's some areas outside that didn't take that into account, but there's one glaring issue and that's 205, where they are not proposing any kind of interchange, which is a problem, and we are, we're telling them that it's a problem. And so, but they will be here at the next council meeting to give that presentation on, and to take feedback, so just so you're aware, maybe take a look at it before the council meeting, just so you're aware of that. Second, Chip, are we doing the ribbon cutting or no on the kitchen?
Uh, no, we are not.
You're not doing that?
We are not.
Do I get that off my calendar?
Sorry.
Okay, I'm deleting it from my calendar. I was going to say, if we're doing that, I want to make sure you guys are invited, but since we're delaying that, that's fine. And lastly, I'll also say the Rees Across America happens the Saturday after our next council meeting, but that's always a really, really cool event at Regional Senate, Terry, and, and I, I think I read on social media today that they actually met their goal, which is fantastic news, so, yes. Congratulations to Gary and all, I know there's lots of people involved, but, you know, Gary Burr has been that driving force and he's, he's, you know, again, he's a military guy, give him a goal, he's not going to stop till he hits it, and it's every year he does that, so anyways. Ted, sorry. Okay, Jenny?
I have nothing.
Leslie?
Quick update on Regional Server Board, we met last week. There were 20 individuals who had not reached out at all to JPR to make connection, so initial letters were sent to give them notice before there's actually suit filed against them. And so, but we're not going to meet again until February because we don't have a lot going on right now. And that'll ramp up for us to go into second phase, so, that's it.
How does that, have we had connections out of Coliseum on the new line?
There were like five or six in Coliseum that didn't.
That didn't, okay.
Yeah.
Cool. No press, anything from the audience? Okay, remember CIP committee meeting that's happening here, probably five minutes or so. Thanks, everybody, have a great night, Happy Thanksgiving.